Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 13, 2015, meeting of the Revere City Council. Will everyone please rise and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call of the members.
Counselor Rigo.
Here.
Counselor Janino.
Here.
Counselor Guanasso is absent. Counselor Haas, absent. Counselor McKenna, absent. Counselor Morabito.
Here.
Counselor Novosolsky.
Here.
Counselor Patch.
Here.
Counselor Riordan.
Here.
Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
And the President.
Here.
Quorum is present. This is a communication from Arthur Guanasso.
Approval of the Journal for the last meeting.
Oh, approval of the Journal.
Motion approved. So ordered.
This is a Counselor Guanasso called communication. I am sorry that I could not be in attendance this evening because I am at home preparing for a planned colonoscopy. This preventative test is very important, and I advise anyone over the age of 40 to have one.
We wish Counselor Guanasso good fortune, and we hope everything works out well for
Pursuant to Council Order 12-022, a joint utility company meeting to discuss ongoing utility work within the city.
Gentlemen, state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. President. Tim Kelly, Comcast Government Affairs, 426 East First Street, Boston, Massachusetts,
Dan Cameron with National Grid, offices at 170 Memphis Street in Marlborough.
Dan, going to open this meeting up to councilors. Counselor Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, let me say, I think we've made great progress with this report. It does have a couple of shortcomings, which I'm going to mention tonight. But one thing I would ask you gentlemen to do for future meeting, if not the next meeting, the meeting after, is give us some idea of what is a reasonable amount of time between the poll, time the poll goes in to the time everybody's, well, with the understanding that we have our fire department that is part of this, with the understanding, at least as far as the utilities are concerned, what is a reasonable time to anticipate that the entire project would be complete, from your perspectives at least. Again, once again, we understand we have fire lines on there, and I'm sure the chief is here, and he's perfectly willing to cooperate with that as well. So we can condense this period a little bit, because, you know, there's no denying that some of these polls have been like this for a long, long time. Many, many years, in some cases, several years in many cases. And really, our desire is to get that period between the time the poll goes in and the time that it gets completely fixed, to be as short as possible. And we understand you guys have to deal with other cities and towns, you have weather issues, you have equipment issues, and from what I understand, there's going to be a labor issue in one area coming up. But nonetheless, I think barring any unusual contingencies, we should have a good idea of how long it's going to be from in to done. I don't have any specific complaints. The only other thing I would suggest this report show is, at what point the issue is passed on from one utility to the next? Because we'd like to know if there is a slow-up in this, and I'm not a big blame guy, but we'd like to know who's responsible for the slowdown as these things progress. And we certainly would like to know what we can do to help facilitate a little quickening of that issue if there is one utility that seems to be having a problem. And I think we're getting there, but I think we still have some work to do. And that would be my only comment. I mean, I could specifically comment on some of the stuff in Ward 4. I have it all outlined here. But until we get this thing fixed in a more organized manner, I don't think we're going to be getting too far anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Riordan. Any other councilors?
Mr. President.
Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tim, on Comcast, we spoke today on the phone on that matter that we've been working on, and just for clarification for the residents on the street, that it will be taken care of Clifton Street. It'll be taken care of shortly.
Yes, Counselor, we did speak earlier. I did send another email to our outside plan team to focus on Clifton Street. It's also in our report for subcontractors as well to get that done. It's my hope that by the next meeting that we're off that poll and that's taken care of.
That'd be good. That is the only thing that's holding up, taking that poll now. And the only other thing I want to do is praise the three years now, I can't, Horizon's not here, but they had an accident a couple of weeks ago at Salem Street. A car hit a pole, and residents wanted me to thank you guys for your quick response, your quick fixing it. And National Grid, if you're, Dan, if you want, it's poll number 3983, at 339 Salem Street. It was a small target, one pole, but now it's a big target with two poles. So if you could put that on top of your list to transfer those wires, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patch. Counselor Novosolsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dan, I guess I'll do you first. 483 Beach Street, looks like it's under National Grid, poll 414. It's been cleaned off for several months now, and it's ready for a pullout, so if we can work on that. Charles Ave, it's Tim that's ours, I believe, 1737? And Dan, James Street again. Seven, and now it shows 726 on the sheet, says 727 on the poll, on James.
That was on the schedule for last week.
Okay, well, nothing's been done now. It was just by there over the weekend. So, you know, the street light's still on it, and everything else is above it, so.
But it was on the schedule.
Okay, but the number doesn't matter that you have it 726 on here, and it's really 727? It's written there, so. And that one that I've been constantly talking about, poll 392, on Beach Street at the corner of Ocean Ave by the Banana Boat, it's not even on the list, and there's nothing on it, so it's ready for a poll. And again, I'll mention poll 48 on the Revere Beach Parkway. And that's about it, and thank you for the other work. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Novosolsky. Gentlemen, on Eustace Street, I had occasion to be over there the other day, and there were two gas trenches, granted, they could be two or three years old, that have sunken considerably. And it bothers the residents over there when cars go over them at night and they hear, you know, the banging of the car. So I'm asking for basically two things. If somebody could go over there and look at those two trenches, I don't know the addresses, Eustace Street is a very small street, and in the future, and I've mentioned this before, some of these contractors that do these trenches for National Grid, they're not compacting them fully as they should, and some of them aren't being sealed off as they should to stop the condensation from going in. So I'm a bit troubled by that. I wonder if you could convey that message to your superiors or whoever's in charge of the construction division, whoever gives out the contracts over there to do these trenches. And the other issue I have is, I don't know if this is you or Horizon, I would imagine it's you, even though it's on a utility pole, there's a street lamp on pole number 2061 on Oak Island, down in Oak Island on Woodland Road. We brought this up about a month ago, about a bird's nest in there.
Oh, yeah.
Preventing the illumination for the street. It's still there, nothing's been done, and I'm wondering if this is something you can bring to your superiors and make sure that this is done. With that, I have no other questions myself. So there are no other councilors wanting to speak. I think that will be it for this evening.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your appearance there. We certainly appreciate it. Thank you. Gentlemen, I'd like to suspend rules and take up calendar item number 13. It's a communication from the mayor relative to transfer requests for the end of the year. There are no objections, rules are under suspension. Mr. Anzoni.
These are the transfers that the local administration has the counties pass every year, something that we've had a bit of difficulty about in there, and done each and every year. What it does, in essence, is make sure that we have the money in the whole accounts, we don't want any deficits. We review all the accounts, we come to overview the accounts.
Hello? Okay.
Right back.
Having trouble with this mic again. Again, let me start again, is that this is something that each and every administration has done in the past 37 years that I've been here, and I know they've done it before then, and it's a procedure so that we have the right amount of money in the various accounts and that we don't have any deficits in in the year. It's something that if we showed a deficit in any of the accounts, it would be problematic. And we have given a good outline, I think, of the reasons why we have a need for these transfers, and it's done at the end of every fiscal year. Again, I would stress to the city council that they please approve these transfers because of the fact that, you know, because of the fact we don't want to have any deficits at the end of the year, we want all accounts to be, and we're not asking for any additional money, it's money that's being transferred between accounts. And again, the reasons for these transfers have been delineated in the communication from the mayor, and also you have a approval letter from the city auditor that the funds are available, so she's verified that the funds are available. So with that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, so.
Counselor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. George, my first question is, why are these so late? I know that usually we get these with a couple of weeks before the end of the fiscal year. Just wondering if there's a reason why we're getting it after the end of the fiscal year and with, you know, two days before they need to be done in order to be in compliance with the state finance law.
Right. I understand that. It's been a very complex year, to say the least. We've had tornadoes hit us during this year, we've had a number of, you know, natural disasters, tornadoes, mountain snow, and other areas that we had to take care of during the year. We have, we're dealing with putting in applications for reimbursements, we're dealing with a number of issues, and we wanted to make certain this year, that, and pushing our department heads, make certain this year that we had all of the transfers in place. And that's why it was after this year. This is the first time it's been after the fiscal year, but this year, there was reasoning for it because of the fact, again, because of the complex year that it was and the number of departments it affected. You know, these natural disaster, disasters, you know, they affected the police department, the fire department, the DPW department, and other departments in City Hall. So with all of that, and the workload that we're facing.
Okay. So, George, for the first time in 30-plus years, this is the first time it's been after the fiscal year, correct?
It, that's correct.
Okay. And so I have a couple of questions about specific transfers that I don't think were covered in the cover letter, the memo. In terms of the amount of $214,000 that's going into the eminent domain account, it looks like there's already $213,000 in that account, so it wouldn't be deficient. I was wondering what the reason for that would be.
Well, one of the reasons was is that there was a court order, well, there was a, actually on one of the properties that were taken, there was an amount of $213,000, $214,000 that was increased above, beyond the settlement after there were further negotiations and a further settlement made with going into court action.
What was that settlement?
That settlement was for the piece of property that was owned for the St. Mary's by one of the property owners at St. Mary's.
Okay. And so the line after that, there's a line after that, and I assume that they're two separate accounts, but they have the same amount of money, the exact same amount of money down to the penny. Are those two different accounts, or are they the same?
Just give me a second to find it. Do you have what page is on?
So it's the first page of the transfers, two.
Okay.
The bottom of the page.
You're talking about the lease settlement, current balance of $213,000?
Right. So both, the two, I assume that they're two separate accounts because they have two different lines, but they have a different description, but the same, exact same amounts in each one?
Right. So they are two different accounts. They actually are, the settlement itself was one settlement, and the settlement, I believe, was for the $214,000, that's the amount of the transfer.
So are those correct or incorrect?
Those are correct. $214,065 was the amount of the settlement.
So there are two, but there are two separate accounts that have the exact same amount of money in them?
No, I think that they, what they are, they are the same account, but they're transferring some from one, and then the lease settlement is going to two different places, they're two different accounts. Well, they are two different accounts, the lease settlement, eminent domain.
Yeah, they're two, they have two different names.
They're two different names, they're two different accounts.
So I didn't know if those amounts were incorrect or not.
No, those are correct.
And then on the, a couple of accounts above that, the collector and treasurer, notes and bonds.
Right.
It looks like there's a deficiency of $103,000, but there's $125,000 being put into that account. What would the extra $20,000?
Well, one of the reasons for the notes and bonds, we had a number of note, bond sales this year because of the, which weren't expected because of one of the ability to refund, say, the city some $200,000 or $200,000. And then there was the ability to sterilize some, almost $16 million of bonds, and that's what caused that increase, because those were unforeseen, and the market was so ripe for selling of the bonds, that we took advantage of that and then did that, so.
So, but we had a deficiency of $103,000, and then you're putting in $125,000?
No, the current balance of the account is $103,000. We're putting in $100, negative 103, we're putting $125,000 in.
So what is the extra $21,000 going to?
Laurie, you have an answer to that?
The account balances are the current balances as of right now. So I have not received invoices to process yet, so it was my understanding that, so in some situations, you'll see that what we're requesting is higher than what the negative is, and that's because there are invoices out there that people have made me aware of, so they're sort of an accrual, and so that's why you have that difference. And that was what each department told me they expected were numbers that weren't already included in my figures.
Okay, and this is the biggest one, so I just wondered what the, do we know what the accrual is?
Well, the difference between the $103,000 and the $125,000.
Right. I haven't actually seen the invoices, but it was my understanding that there were invoices outstanding that were needing to be processed or would be received to be processed. You don't always receive all of the invoices until sometime this month, so we do the best that we can to estimate what the deficits are going to be leading up to that point in time.
Okay. And then in terms of the police overtime account, do we, and this might be more of a question for later on, but do we have a breakdown of what those extra costs are and what work was being done for that overtime?
Well, I don't have that.
The actual breakdown of what it is would come from the police department, because they keep their payroll accounts isolated to what reasons why they had to do their overtime. So that breakdown would be from the police department. If you want me to request that, I will.
Okay, I will request that. I just want to know what were, what were the unexpected or unanticipated overtime costs and what kind of breakdown they have, if, what kind of work was being done? And would that be available by, I assume that would be available by position or individual?
We can get it down to individual if we need be.
And will there be a description of what their work is, like what the work that they did would be?
Well, it could be, it could be, if they were filling in for somebody else, it could be overtime because of snow, it could be overtime because of the tornado, it could have been overtime for a number of reasons, whether or not, I'm pretty sure they have to isolate that anyway, because we have to put that into a report on that. So I'm pretty sure we can get that from the police department, but if you would like to send me a memo exactly what you want, I will have that drawn out for you.
Okay.
Okay?
And then for the police chief's salary, the extra $7,700, is that on top of the $218,000 salary? Or is that part of the?
There was a deficit in that, and that is part of it.
I just wonder, because I know, we know what the chief's salary is, we know, you know, he's a pretty well-paid chief for the Commonwealth. I just wonder if this amount is on top of what he's getting currently, or if it's, you know, part of what he, what he's made in, like, the $218,000 range?
I think part of it is that, too, is that, you know, he reaches 25-year step, so that could be the other portion of it. I don't know exactly when he reaches his 25-year step, but that amount would be, he didn't get any increases other than from last year, other than what the normal increases according to union contracts. So there wasn't any other additional amount given to him. So the amount you're talking about is the amount that you're in, and I believe in fiscal year 2014 showed up on his, on the list of the highest, on the paid list of people in the city employees.
Okay. And then on the last page, there's one transfer into the DPW general account, maintenance of equipment. It looks like after, there's a $13,000 deficiency currently, but we're only transferring in $7,800, so that would leave, I presume, a deficiency going forward. Basically, it's not enough money to cover the account.
It doesn't seem that way. Laurie, do you have a?
I think that was just, we had to book a reclass entry, but at that point in time, the balance was this balance. So, but the money I'm requesting is the amount that we'll need. It's either that, or it could be, on some of these accounts, we get reimbursed from different departments, so it could be that as well.
So is the current balance amount not current?
Yeah, I think that that was a reclass, that particular one. I can get to that information, Brian.
Okay. Like I said, it would be nice to have this information vetted out through.
Did I not explain that in here?
Through department, through what?
Did we not explain it in the explanation in the letter?
The continued deficiency of that account? Is not, no.
Do you have that?
So, Mr. President, like I said, it would be nice if we had a little bit more time to analyze and look at this information, and it sounds like in the past, we have had that time, but we are not afforded that this time around. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Rigo. Are there any other councilors that want to speak on the transfers? Madam Clerk, call the roll on the transfers.
This is a motion to transfer from various accounts to different departments. Counselor Rigo?
No.
Counselor Janino?
No.
Counselor Guanasso is absent, Counselor Haas is absent, Counselor McKenna is absent, Counselor Morabito? Counselor Novosolsky?
Yes.
Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
And the President.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five. Motion fails.
The motion's failed?
Mm-hmm.
Insufficient amount of votes.
I did make a comment here. We don't have any, okay. We don't have any further time, the time has run out pretty much for us to, for the city to have these transfers passed. We have July 15. This is the first council meeting that we had available to, to see on the year that we were able to pass these. If we do not pass these transfers, and these accounts are in deficit, it's going to hurt our bond rating, it's going to hurt our standing with the bond rating agencies, standing in force, and also in our money markets. One of the reasons why it's so important to have these transfers done, and we're so careful doing them. I mean, we don't transfer money unless we need it, and we've shown a need for it, and if there's a further explanation that's needed, that's something we'll dig out for you, but at the same time, as we're running against a wall. And for the city to run against a wall and not be able to have transfers passed so that there are no deficits in any accounts would be irresponsible to the city, and then go into a fiscal year and have that appear on their financial report, because this would affect our June 30 financial report. I have some bond issues that are coming, that will be issued this year. I also probably have at that time a rating, and I think the rating agencies will, in the next couple of months, will be reviewing the end-of-year reports, and I stress very strongly to the city council that it's, the importance of passing these transfers are of the utmost. They're, would have a devastating effect on the city as far as the financials are concerned. It's not one that we take lightly, okay? They may be late, they may not have time to review them, however, we had to take our time to review them to make sure they were certain so that our numbers at the end our numbers at the end, you know, we're dealing with 165 million budget last year and getting all these transfers in. It's a tedious job, and it's something that we worked very hard on. Myself and the City Auditorium, the Mayor's Office worked very hard on getting it together. And again, if there's any possible way to reconsider this vote and pass it so that the city doesn't have a devastating effect, it will be a devastating effect. This will be the first time, again, in my 37 years, that one council hasn't passed the transfer request. And then again, first time in 37 years that I would have to go to our financial markets and say, well, we couldn't get a transfer through the City Council and we're showing deficits in all these accounts. Because after tonight, we can't write this. We cannot write this after tonight.
Let me say this to you, sir. When we scheduled the meeting, the next meeting?
Right.
For the 27th, at that point, we had no idea that these transfers were going to be coming up. And granted, there are three councilors missing here tonight. And for that reason, we put off voting on some zoning changes.
Okay.
But aside from that, if, I am sure that if the councilors were aware, they would have made a point to be here. And I would have scheduled a meeting for this evening previously, and they would have been here.
But it's not any criticism against the council or scheduling of a meeting, what it is, it's just factual right now. It's just we, our time has run out and in all honesty, our time has run out in that we are up against a wall. And I hate to see, especially where we have a great rapport with the financial markets, I hate to see that devastated by the fact that the, these transfers aren't passed. So if the council would just reconsider them and pass them because of the fact that it is devastating, it will be devastating, show deficits in these accounts, we actually have the money and the flow of the money to cover them.
Counselor Morabito?
Thank you, Mr. President. George, back in June, I sent you an email about the budget, when will it be ready? You said by the end of, you said by the end of the month. And I know you don't take the budget lightly, but at the same time, none of us take the budget lightly either. And we have the financial responsibility, because we're elected by the people, to do the right thing. We literally had to cram a book, pull overnighters like we're back in college because we had one week to review the whole budget for a $169 million budget. It was kind of ridiculous. But now this comes, this comes on Friday night. City Hall is closed. Who do we call for questions?
Okay.
So that, this is my reasoning behind my vote for no, because I need more time, just a little bit of time, more.
Well, what change would you make? What change would you make if you, what information could I give you that would make you change your mind, is one. Two is the fact that, we've researched this. We've actually, we are willing to verify that these are the exact amounts that are due for these expenditures. If you're not happy with the expenditures, they're expenditures that are ones that are going to bring the council into deficit. And because we haven't received all the invoices on it yet. So in doing such, what we're trying to do is make it so that there is zero deficit at the end of the year. It's, as far as the judgment about the expenditures, that is made with the time of the budget. But what happens is, again, with these transfers, is it avoids a deficit at the end of the year that's not necessary. And that's why we put in, it may have had a shorter period of time, but we've been working on these. Trust me, there's been a lot, a lot of time spent on these and make certain that our numbers, you know, we have to reconcile it all at the end. We have to make certain that our numbers are, and as you said, 165 million budget, now 169. We have to make certain that our numbers match. And that takes quite a bit of effort.
And I'm not doubting your efforts that you or the mayor put in. I know there's a lot of time and effort that goes into this budget. I am not discrediting Mayor Rizzo or yourself. But all I'm saying is, you've been doing this for a very long time.
I have.
And you knew this was going to come up. You knew this was going to be presented to the City Council. I wasn't born yesterday, so it's just, I felt like we could have got this information three weeks ago.
No, you couldn't have got it three weeks ago because we didn't have all the information on South Street. If I had it three weeks ago, I would have given it to you three weeks ago. But I didn't have the information, the city didn't have the information three weeks ago. And that's something that we had to deal with. I mean, it was very frustrating to us not to have all the information down. And if we had the information, and you said that, you know, the amount of time that we gave you for the budget, you have to look at, and yes, you did cram it in, and I was there during those meetings, you crammed it in, and everybody did an excellent job on that budget in going through the process. But again, we, the budget got much more complicated since we've gone to the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, to get their approval for a presentation budget award. So, I mean, things have gotten much more complicated. And we're trying to keep this all in line. And this is what we're looking at. But again, to say, all right, if there's some transfer in here you're not comfortable with, well, we're going to discuss it. But at the same time, as we're not trying to push this down anybody's throat, what we're trying to do is, just as a normal course of business, get this done so that we don't suffer in the financial market. Because I know when I go to the financial markets and I show them that we have deficits in these accounts, they're going to look at me and say, okay, what happened? And I'm going to say, well, I can sit there and say, well, the council wouldn't approve it, but you know something? That's, they're not going to take that answer. They're going to say, well, okay, something's wrong here. And once they start getting a little itch that something's wrong, they're going to start saying, okay, every time I go to them, they're going to be checking us just a little bit more and a little bit more and a little bit deeper. And they, trust me, they check us quite deeply now. I was here when, when I first came on back in 78, there was no bond rating the city had. And we got, six months back, we got our bond rating back. And I know how devastating that is. So what I'm saying to you is, okay, maybe there was a time lag, and I agree, maybe there's a time lag as far as, but this was not withheld from the City Council. As soon as we got the information that we needed, we presented it to the City Council. And I can honestly say that to you. Because there's no purpose for us to, to go ahead and withhold information from the City Council. It's not a responsible of the, as the administration, it's not a responsible thing for me as a finance officer's duty. And again, I would like to ask this council, does consider that a revote and pass this? So again, we don't go to the financial markets and ruin the good standing we have with it. We have bonds that we go for sale originally, a few years ago, it was only two people that would, two companies that would borrow. And now we have eight major players that are interested in us and saying, okay, we want to borrow our debt. We have a lot of debt still outstanding. I got school debt, $16 million of school debt, eventually it's going to have to be sold. They see this, this isn't going to affect us this year. This is going to affect us this year, next year, the year after, the year after, until maybe five or six years down the road, eight years down the road, nine years down the road. And it's just an effect that I don't think it's worth, an effect I don't think the city, it's not necessary for the city to go.
Mr. President, I'd just like to say.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. You finished, Counselor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
The mayor has the floor.
So, you know, clearly, and I think George Anzoni had indicated the fact that if we had it, we had the numbers, we would have given them to you. We're not, you know, this is a public body, right? So we're not trying to hold back any type of, in fact, last year, I will add, there were two times we were up here for transfers. One was prior to the end of the fiscal year, and once was after. So this is not the first time. And I think if you go back to my predecessor, who was here for 12 years, there were many times that this City Council voted on an emergency basis. It had to get voted, it had to get voted. Because I know, because I sat on this council for 12 years. This is not something unusual that we come up and ask for. And what really is particularly troubling is the fact that, you know, look, I understand you don't have a lot of time, you only have the weekend to look it over. It's not that massive, but nonetheless, I understand it was the Friday before. This is money that's in these accounts. We're asking for transfers. We're not asking for any more appropriations. We're asking to transfer money from one account to another. And the thought that people would jeopardize the city's financial standing because you didn't have enough time to look at it, and we're transferring amongst accounts that's within city government, is beyond my imagination. I mean, I know if it were me, and I voted on a lot of votes up here that had to do with finances, I could never jeopardize the city's financial standing because I want to prove a point I didn't have a chance to look at or I didn't have a chance to read it. This, you know, this is something that, you know, I'd like to see revisited. You know, I know there were, you know, councilors that have been here for, you know, for quite some time that understand the impact of what this is going to have on the city and our future ability to borrow. Has nothing to do with me. This is going to go down the road for the, you know, for the remainder of the city. You know, so I would like to echo the sentiments of our Director of Finance and say, go back, revisit this, and, you know, let's pick another fight. But I mean, the fact that we're going to jeopardize the city's transfers, you know, just transferring from one account to another, not asking for any more appropriations, any more money, no impact at all on the taxpayers, to jeopardize the financial standing of this community, can't understand it, Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor, let me just clear one thing. I don't think, I.
And I know you supported it, Mr. President.
I don't think anyone on the City Council is deliberately looking to jeopardize the financial integrity of the city of Revia.
Well, that's what's happening.
I know I'm not. And I don't think anyone else is. I think as councilors, okay, we all have the right to ask questions, particularly on.
Did you ever see a transfer, did you ever see an end-of-year transfer, Counselor? You've been up here for a long time. Did you ever see a transfer voted down, ever?
They normally come in.
Ever? Did you ever see a transfer voted down?
No, I haven't.
I haven't either.
But I'll tell you one thing.
And now to know that the city's financial standing is going to be put at jeopardy because we don't want to transfer from one account to another? You know, that's, hey, listen, I'm going to come here with a budget next year and the year after, and the year after that. The only thing, it might reflect higher interest rates. It might reflect, it might reflect higher costs that the city has to use to do business. That is not good for the taxpayer, okay? I understand there might be some concerns that it came later than you would have liked. And we're sorry about that, and I'm grateful the councilors that voted yes. But don't jeopardize the city's financial standing. You want to come down to my office and have a discussion about it, which I didn't have a conversation with anybody about it today, but you want to have a conversation about it? I'll have a conversation about it. But don't, don't sit here as an elected official of this community and jeopardize the city's financial standing. It makes absolutely no sense to me. We can have a nice little discussion afterwards, and we can have a slapdown as to, you want things quicker. But don't jeopardize the city's financial standing right now because it is a negative to the city that's going to be felt by the taxpayers.
Let me just say this to you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I don't think anyone is trying to jeopardize the financial standing of the city. We get elected by the voters of this city to ask questions, not just to sit here and rubber stamp everything.
So let's answer questions.
And I can't understand why we get the budget as late as we do.
The budget is in performance.
Past years, past years.
The budget, the budget was given.
Mr. Anzoni, you know, you worked for Counselor Claude. The budget was always up here early, that I can remember.
The budget, you know, we were, you know, so, so, listen, that was the budget, and the budget's over with. These are transfers right now. If there's questions, ask the questions. We, I mean, Counselor Rego, ask questions. I believe the director answered them. But don't put the, you know, you know, I know you're saying that nobody here wants to jeopardize, well, you know what? They are jeopardizing. By this vote tonight, they're jeopardizing the future of the city. It's going to come out of all of our pockets, it's going to come out of the pockets of the taxpayers. I mean, if that's.
In my pocket too. I pay taxes in this city, just like you do.
That's right. And I know you voted yes. And I know, you know, so, I mean, like, why, why the rest of the council, including yourself, isn't clamoring for a vote to say, hey, listen, if you have questions, let's ask these questions now because this is going to jeopardize the standing of our city? I don't know why there's not more conversation about it.
Counselor Janino, Mr. Mayor, wants to ask a question now, I believe. Counselor Janino?
Thank you. I just wanted to speak regarding my vote. You know, this isn't the first time that I've had a financial issue put before me, whether it be a bond, or the budget, or a transfer. And every single time, it's, oh, guess what? It's due tomorrow. We have to vote on it right now. So I don't even understand why it comes before the council. What do you need our vote for? What, like, there's nothing that we can do. So I find it hard that I'm elected by the taxpayers to make informed decisions on their behalf that I don't have any information on. And even if I do, there's nothing that I can physically do because we have two days to make a decision on it. So I guess my, my question is, you know, who are we supposed to call on Friday night and Saturday and Sunday to figure out what our questions are? What are we here for?
You could have called me today. You could have called, do you have, so, listen, there's not a time limit on this council meeting. Let's go through it page by page, line by line. And if you have questions, let's get it out now. Because it's that important to the city. You just want to say, I'm going to vote no for the sake of voting no, and jeopardizing the city's financial standing because you got a late, a late communication that I sat here for 12 years and I received plenty of late communications?
If it was that important, we would have it on time more often, but nothing is.
Do you know we had a tornado? And do you know we had the worst winter in recorded history?
I do.
That required a lot of departments to scramble to get their reports?
Absolutely.
You do? Okay. So I'm glad you know that. But right now, right now, this vote that you made is jeopardizing the city's financial integrity, okay? So if this city gets a bond downgrade, you own it, not me. This report is here, and I'm willing to stand here for as long as it takes to answer questions. If you're just going to stand here and say, I got it late and I'm not interested in talking anymore, well, that's not really right. At least I don't see it as being right. I don't have anywhere to go. You have questions? You want to talk to me about it? Let's ask questions. And then let's revisit it and let's vote. Don't jeopardize the city's financial standing over, over, over the fact that you got a report late. Because I got plenty of reports late. And I know this council is sitting here right now that sat with me for 12 years in the City Council, that got late requests like this all the time. And we voted on it because we didn't, we would never, as a body, jeopardize the city's financial standing. We weren't happy about it, and we, and I had conversations, I had plenty of conversations with Marian Bracino at the time, the fact that we would get requests up here at the last minute. But I would never cast a vote that would, that would put this city in a negative light to the financial institutions that we work with, ever.
Counselor Rego?
So in terms of the police overtime, and I'll ask questions because I didn't really get an answer to it, maybe we can find an answer. Of the $356,000 that is being transferred in, and the $356,000 that we have in a deficiency, do we have a, again, do we have an understanding of how that money was being spent or why we overspent it by that amount? You know, specifically, how much was, was on different details and who those details were for? And what kind of breakdown there is in terms of that overtime? Do we, do we have that, George?
I don't have that on me, and I don't think the City Auditor has that information either. I think, again, as I said, it's something that would be coming from the police department that would have to request from them to get for us. As far as details, I'm not so certain it's details. I think the overtime for the most part is coverage. We had to have call-in additional personnel during tornadoes, during blizzards, for a number of reasons. And the deficit isn't in the detail, because you don't carry details in your deficit anyway. It's only overtime that are working, overtime as far as shifts and so on and so forth.
So George, how much of that is related to, to the mayor's detail?
The mayor's detail, what's the mayor's detail?
The escort, the driven escort.
Escort? I don't know if any of it is.
You don't know if any of it is?
I don't think any of it is, no. Not overtime.
Not, so none of it is overtime, or you don't know?
If you're talking detail, none of the detail comes out of that account. That account is.
None of the detail comes out of overtime?
Out of overtime, right.
That's not my understanding, but, you know, that's.
Well, detail, now, listen, detail is, say, for example, if somebody comes in and they're fixing a street, that's the definition. And they have a policeman there, and that's the definition of a detail, okay? If somebody is assigned to, say, for example, has to be called in on a shift because we don't have enough people to cover the shift, or for some reason, that's something that will go into that account. that will go into that account, and that's what I'm saying.
I'm talking about the, the, the police officer that drives the mayor around?
Well, you're talking-
How mu, is any overtime being spent on that?
Well, there's no overtime being spent on that, to my knowledge.
That's not my understanding, so I, that's something that I would like to-
Well, that's something that I'll look into for you, and I'll get you that back, okay? But... No, no. Please, just a little second, all right?
I just want to know if that, if that's what created this deficit in the account.
Well, the deficit of the account of $356,000 for, for, for that just wouldn't make, uh, that wouldn't be reasonable, and, uh, that wouldn't be reasonable to have that, just that you're talking-
There could be a portion of it, George. That's what, my point is, there could be a portion of that, and-
It could be a portion, I'm just saying, it could be a portion, how big of a portion is, it's not a large portion of that amount, uh, but I do think that, uh, again, if we're talking, uh, it's not a detail, it's an assignment, and, uh, that's what, the differentiation of what the terms are used, it'd be an assignment. Uh, other than that, I don't have, uh, an answer for it. I'll be glad to, uh, again, look into that and, and give you that information, and I know the information now you're looking for, and I will get you that.
Mr. President, may I speak?
Councilor Rego? Are you done?
I'll, uh, yield the remainder of my time.
Councilor Morabito?
I'm switching my vote, okay? Now, hear me, I'm going to be very clear and precise, okay? Next time a transfer of this magnitude comes before us, I do not want it two days before. Can you guarantee that? Because unless it's an imminent emergency, I'm not going to accept it. It's just pathetic. It, it's just not tolerable, and it's not, it shouldn't be done.
Let me say this, what we'll do next time, if it comes to a event where we're so squeezed as this time, we will make ourselves available on the weekend to answer any of your questions.
It's not a matter of being a-
All right, or even we'll sit down with the council and say, "Here are the, we'll have a class or a, a, a session, we will sit down and say, 'Okay, before the transfers come up, we list all your questions, what they are, and we'll make certain that they're fully, uh, described to you or discussed with you, so they have all your answers.'" We're not here to withhold answers from you. We're here, we were just pressured against time, and that, that's really what happened, Councilor.
Mr. Anzoni?
Right.
When we received the budget, we were all here until 9:30 every night. We all had questions, and that was with a week of preparation of, again, we got the information within a week. We need, we need the, this information, not two days before. It's just, it's just-
I will promise this, if I have the numbers, you have, I will not, I will never hold the numbers-
But I, I just need, I need to be precise and clear, and let the viewers know that I'm, I'm not going to approve something that's coming. I am going to make an exception, right, for tonight, but from this day forward, I will not approve anything that comes before me two days before, and that's that.
Okay, I understand.
Thank you, Councilor Morabito. Councilor Morabito changes his vote to yes, and the motion on the transfers is passed.
Transfer's over.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Refer back to the regular order of business.
Take the next counsel's item, please.
Unfinished business. Motion of reconsideration filed by Councilor Zambudo relative to the Verizon petition for a joint pole location on Ward Street. Oh, okay. Can we refer to?
Yeah.
Revere Cares?
Yeah, Revere Cares.
Okay. The Department of Healthy Community Initiatives, along with Revere Cares, will address the City Council on the opioid crisis prevention intervention treatment and recovery process.
Who is, uh, here representing Revere Cares? Is it Kitty or Raina?
Mr. President, before, Mr. President, before we move forward, can I, can I file for, uh, can I suspend the rules and ask for, uh, reconsideration and hope it will not prevail on that last item?
Certainly, certainly. We're under suspension.
We're already under suspension, that's correct.
Motion to reconsider is lost. Zambudo moved reconsideration.
It's not for real. Okay, we don't have to wait. Doesn't matter. We don't have a call? Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, we got a call. We want to hold it off, I guess, until our other council is back.
Why don't you hold it off until the 27th is withdrawn?
You're the President, so whatever you want to do, it's fine with me.
Okay, good.
Okay, on the opioid crisis?
On the opioid, yes. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to thank everybody, first off, for, uh, being here to talk about this horrific crisis that's not only facing the city of Revere, but facing Massachusetts and cities and towns across the country. Many of you may know that back on June 22nd, Governor Baker, uh, released a report of 65 actionable steps, uh, that were, uh, agreed upon by a, by an 18-member opioid, uh, working group that was developed by the Governor and Lieutenant Governor to combat the state's staggering opioid epidemic. These findings are extensive and spread across areas of prevention, treatment, intervention, support, and education. A lot of people have a real misunderstanding about the opioid crisis. There is a stigma that comes with the opioid crisis, and people that, um, uh, have suffered addiction, and, uh, but I bet there's probably not many of us in this room that don't at least know somebody that has succumbed to addiction, maybe have family members who have fallen to addiction, uh, and sadly, some here in the room have probably even, uh, lost people that they know and love. We have been dealing with this issue as a community now for quite some time. We have, uh, some people here from Revere Cares and the Winter Summit Regional Opioid Collaborative, in which the city of Revere spearheads under the direction of Julia Newhall. Those communities include Winthrop, Revere, uh, Sogus, and Chelsea, all again, uh, dealing with this terrible, terrible problem. Yes, anecdotally, you should know that over, just over the 4th of July weekend, we had 10 knock-in reversals here in the city of Revere, 10, that but for the knock-in, we may have lost 10 people in one weekend. Town of Arlington had four such incidents, but only one reversal and three fatalities during that same time period. This is a problem that is, uh, far-reaching and, uh, seemingly out of control. We have taken great pride in our participation in the rock, this Winter Summit Regional Opioid Collaborative, but we've also taken it a step further, and we've created our own opioid task force here locally, because as much as we like to work in collaboration with other cities and towns, the problem is, um, epidemic now. Last year, I believe, we lost 13 people to overdose, or we've already surpassed that number this year, and it's only July. So it is clearly a problem that needs to be handled and dealt with, and I appreciate the City Council's interest in working with us to, to help solve it. Tonight, along with you, the City Council, my office, the Healthy Community Initiatives Department, and Revere Cares Coalition, what we'd like to do is make a presentation to you about what's being done locally around prevention intervention, intervention, treatment, and recovery, and what more can be done through our own local Revere opioid task force. I will bring up Dimple Rana in just a couple of seconds, who is the manager of our Healthy Community Initiatives Department, but first, I'd like to bring up our Fire Chief, Gene Doherty, to talk about, from his perspective, on what's happening regarding this opioid crisis. Chief?
As the mayor stated, there's a collaborative effort throughout the city on, uh, dealing with, uh, addiction and abuse of, uh, alcohol, tobacco, and, uh, opiates, whatever. We call it the ATOD task force that started, uh, come out of Revere Cares, the alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. Um, I first met with Kitty Bowman, uh, from Mass General and Revere Cares back in 2004, when, uh, she started her Learn to Know program, and we talked a great deal about what we saw then relative to overdoses, or the proliferation of addictions. And it proceeded to a point that in 2011, we hit representation on the Revere Cares and the ATOD, and, um, uh, with Captain Piccarolo from my office was on the regular. We attended all the meetings and went forward with what we thought at that time that was recommended, um, by the experts as to what were gateway drugs and things such as that. So you fast-forward to 2011, and, um, we were very fortunate to meet up with, uh, a friend of ours through high school, Jay Pick, and myself, Gary Landjes, who's a harm reduction specialist, and made us aware of this knock-in that was out there, that they were actually issuing to parents at the time of people that were in addiction. And we had no idea what, what it was, and Gary had explained to us that, um, geez, you really should get to know what's going, how to use this, because, uh, the parents in the time of, uh, when somebody is overdosing, uh, they don't have the wherewithal or the presence of mind a lot of the times to do anything but be in total distress. So he brought, he brought it to the stations, and we, uh, made a presentation to the firefighters and told them this was, they might meet up with this, and we were able to hook up through that, uh, with the Department of Public Health on a, on a trial basis and as a test basis. Revere and Quincy was to, um, carry knock-in on all the fire apparatus. Quincy Police decided to take it with them. We, Revere Fire did it here. It was the first in the nation where first responders, not medics on the ambulance, first responders were applying knock-in. They won't even, they wouldn't even let us have an EpiPen, EMTs at the time, uh, but they, we went through this program, taught all the firefighters. The union was tremendous in it. They stepped back, knew it was a possibility, it was going to do very well for the citizens. They saw the results immediately, and they were actually, you know, truly saving lives, and as it went, other departments, it took a few years, but they started following. Um, again, going into the last couple of years, we've had both, uh, the drugzars come up and visit us, specifically because of the programs in Revere. And, um, one very under-the-radar media, the last drugzar for President Obama, met down at the Parkway Station, the mayor, our firefighters, people from Revere Cares, and, you know, was praising us for the programs that we were doing, that, uh, we were ahead of the norm. Sad to say, but we were ahead. The subsequent, the new appointment from President Obama, Michael Botticelli, who is a local Massachusetts, uh, former Department of Public Health person, um, specifically invited myself and some Metro Fire Chiefs down into DC. We went down and spoke to his, um, uh, opiate specialist, this Dr. Cece Spitnas, and told her the programs we were doing, and specifically, the idea that here in Revere, we were attempting to, the knock-in just wasn't enough. We were kind of like putting a finger in the dyke, and we had to do something more. And I, more or less, kind of, I stole something out of this Weymouth Fire Department. They were doing, they set up a, a great website, um, and they were mailing out a packet of information to anybody that they went to their, uh, certain address and applied knock-in to that person. So I decided we could take that one more step further, and we would actually have firefighters go out and follow up at the homes for these people that had, uh, an overdose or, and a reversal, and to offer specific help for the abuser, but in particular, the families, because the families are left in this lurch. Um, there's denial, there's not really knowing what's going on, and there's not knowing where to turn to. So specifically, this folder you all have up in front of you, it's missing one part to it. It's a, a large program from Learn to Cope. But this program, this folder goes out with a couple of firefighters, one firefighter, a recovery coach, uh, that's affiliated with the, uh, drop-in center that, um, uh, Mass General Revere Cares sponsors on Tuesday nights at, uh, North Suffolk. Um, they might go out with, um, the addiction specialist that is there, but they, we go to the homes and we offer this information. We've, only since June 1st, we've made nine visits, uh, to homes. It's a little difficult sometimes where the overdose is from another city, which is a lot. Uh, they come into Revere, they make their buy and, um, get overdosed in the local business, uh, in a bathroom somewhere, but the ones that we can follow up, we've made nine visits, uh, very well-received, uh, the firefighters and the recovery coach. We've actually gotten two people to go, uh, to detox, and, uh, allayed a lot of fears that the families had. We, I should also state that when we, I went down to DC, the Director, the, uh, of the National Drug Control Policy, Mr. Botticelli, came up to visit us, and, uh, we spoke, the mayor came over, and we had a meeting with him over at Boston Fire Headquarters, and, uh, again, he was extremely expressed, the quote was, "You people are light-years ahead of the rest of the country." So we've been sending what we've been doing here in Revere down to DC, so they can, they are tracking us now to see how much further they can go to push this throughout the country. Massachusetts in itself is way ahead, but again, the numbers are way ahead. This year now, as the mayor gave you some numbers, I, I'll give you what I consider worse, um, we have already surpassed la, total of last year, right now, with overdoses. 157, I think, last year? We're beyond 160 now. It's not anything you're going to ever arrest away. The police chief up in Gloucester has this plan. We're both on the same radio program one night together. I disagree with a lot of things. It's very well-intended, but there are some real holes in it, but it is getting help for certain people. Um, we feel that this program is not just targeting the abuser, but the families as well, and I think that's one of the most critical things, is to get the help for families of these people, because if the family don't, doesn't understand what to do or where to get the help, it just isn't going to happen. The abuser really has to hit rock bottom before they'll make that realization, and most of the time, rock bottom is dead, and it's a very sad state of affairs. So we're going forward with this, uh, we had, we set up a website. We plagiarized quite a bit out of Weymouth, um, uh, but it, it, they gave, with permission, obviously. Uh, revererecoveryhelp.org, it's a great little website, it's in the process, but, uh, we've had quite a few hits on it already. Uh, we're pushing it out there. Uh, it gives a lot of links for people to get help, and, because generally, the, the abuser's not on the computer, uh, you know, looking at that up, but once in a while, they'll go out there. But if we get this information to the home, and we get it, the parents have it at, uh, right at their fingertips, it'll, it'll make a drastic change. But with, it is, it's a, it's an extremely difficult, um, situation to be in. I go back with Mayor Ambrosino when we first started out, and now with Mayor Rizzo and his full push and, and support with it, uh, our fire union, that's, it's been tremendous, the firefighters, but they see the difference in what this really, how this affects people. July 1st to this date, uh, we've had 18 overdoses, 12, 12 reversals, or 13 reversals, and, uh, two fatalities. So it's, um, if, if we didn't have those reversals, that would be terrible. Everybody's, hate to say, jumping on, on board because they have to. Uh, this is no, there is no, um, class of people that are, have become addicts. This crosses all socioeconomic boundaries. We're getting 15-year-old kids and 62-year-old women. I mean, it's just, it's, it's utterly crazy how much this has affected society. The Commissioner of Boston told me that their knock-in reversals, or the way they're applying knock-in the most, is in Boston's financial district. It's not in Mattapan, it's not in Dorchester, it's in the financial district. That means a couple of things. One, a little more affluent person that can purchase drugs, and it isn't just heroin, it's the vicodins and the perks and things such as that, but it's also the clubs and everything that's down in that area, but it is, uh, it has become a, uh, the opiates have become a drug of, uh, a higher income. They say now that a, a great portion of people that are in, are addicted to opiates exceed $50,000 a year in income. Now, before, that was, all we would pen is was the person that's on Mass Health- Now, before, that was, all we would pen is was the person that's on Mass Health, has no job, and, you know, is an addict, and is scum, and is this and that. It isn't. It's somebody's brother, sister, son, daughter, father, mother. It's across all boundaries. So just as the mayor stated, we're there, we're trying to do the best we can, and we'll look for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for that very informative presentation. And I'd also like to thank your department for the work that they do out there with regard to this administering the preventive for overdoses. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just to bring up now, Dimple Rana, who is our manager of our Healthy Community Initiative Department.
Dimple, please.
So before I get started, I want to actually thank Chief Doherty and the Revere Fire Department and our Revere Police Department, and I believe Dr. Weil from our Board of Health was just here. We also have Joan Quinlan and Leslie Eldridge from the Center of Community Health Improvement of MGH. We also have Raquel Calderon here from the New England Region of Health and Human Services, Judy Lawler from the Chelsea Drug Court, Paul Cuziak from the Mass, he's Massachusetts' Parent Ambassador for the Partnership of DrugFreeKids.org, and to all of our community members here also in the room. So tonight, as Mayor Rizzo had stated, we are here in collaboration with the City Council, Mayor Rizzo and his office, MGH Revere Cares Coalition, the Healthy Community Initiatives Department, and our Massachusetts Opiate Abuse Prevention Collaborative Grant, which funds our regional work of The Rock, the Winnetka Regional Opiate Collaborative, again, which includes Revere, Winthrop, Chelsea, and Saugus. So tonight, we are here to present on Revere's responses to the opiate crisis. Our goals this evening include informing the City Council and community on what is currently being done and identify gaps as it relates to prevention, intervention, treatment, and recovery. Second, we want to leave you with recommendations on how we can move forward. I apologize that we do not have a PowerPoint presentation set up for our audience. We do have some packets that we will pass out, and then, City Councilors, you also have the presentation in front of you. The information that we are presenting is as current as possible. However, we may have missed something. So we encourage everyone in the room to provide feedback on the note cards that we will pass out, and leave it with one of the presenters before you leave. And we are happy to answer any questions after this presentation is over and take comments. And I'd also like to mention that Patrick Cronin of Moore has left some outreach material on the table to my left. Everyone is welcome to take a copy before they leave. At this time, I'd like to bring up Viviana Catano.
Thank you very much, Dimple. If you please state, just state your name and address for the council.
Hello, my name is Viviana Catano Merino. I am the manager of the Alcohol, Tobacco, and Other Drug Task Force for the Revere Cares Coalition, and I'm also a Revere resident. As the mayor and the chief already mentioned, I think we have an understanding of the immensity of the opioid epidemic, and I just briefly also wanted to share with folks some other facts that highlight the importance of taking action on what is happening. In Massachusetts alone, in 2013, there were 978 fatalities due to opioid overdoses. And speaking locally, from 2003 to 2013, Revere saw a 20% increase in opioid overdose deaths. That makes our city the seventh hardest hit in terms of fatal overdoses in all the Commonwealth. And the chief also illustrated that the use of Narcan has already surpassed last year's We understand that the opioid crisis is too big for one entity, department, organization to tackle on their own. Efforts have to be coordinated by multiple partners, and responding to the opioid crisis needs to be done in terms of the areas of prevention, intervention, treatment, and recovery. As you can see in page three of the presentation, there are many city entities, departments, and organizations already implementing some strategies. So I wanted to speak to those, and then we'll go more into detail about who is doing what. So in terms of the city of Revere, we have Mayor Dan Rizzo's office, the Healthy Community Initiatives, Fire, Police, Health Department, and Revere Public Schools. The Revere Cares Coalition has been around for 17 years, and through different grant sources, we have worked to prevent substance use disorders in our communities and to address the opioid crisis. The goal of our coalition is to do what we're doing right now, promote collaboration to improve the health of our citizens. Members of the coalition include residents, community organizations, elected officials, schools, police, fire, and health departments. What the coalition does cannot be done without all the people that sit at our table and make things happen. North Suffolk Mental Health and MGH have also been key providers in addressing this crisis. Last year, Massachusetts General Hospital established substance use disorders as an So now you can move on to page five. So I wanted to give you an overview of what are the best practices in terms of prevention and what the city is doing in terms of, in terms of those. So when you're preventing substance use disorders, whether it's for alcohol, tobacco, or a drug, or as we're doing, as we're talking tonight specifically about opioids, you use similar strategies. First, provide information. This can be done via traditional media or social media, or it can be done in a setting such as tonight, where we're informing you and the community via television about this crisis and how we're responding. We also need to enhance the skills of those who can prevent substance abuse, meaning parents. What are the, what information and resources and skills do parents need to talk to their kids about preventing substance abuse? What information do teachers need? What do providers need? We also understand that our target audience in terms of prevention is teens who haven't started using, and these teens, they don't live in isolation, they're not in a vacuum, they need support to make positive decisions. So examples of providing support for teens include campaigns or alternative activities, positive alternative activities. We also understand that we need to reduce illegal access to prescription drug abuse or any other substance. We need to think about what is the physical design? How are youth accessing this prescription drugs? So one of the examples of this strategies is a medicine take-back event. If your assessment is telling you that nationally, this is true, that the trend that most youth tend to get their prescription drugs from their own medicine cabinets at home, so you need to talk to parents and other people about safeguarding these medications. You also need to provide incentives for your partners. Again, nobody alone in this community can prevent substance abuse. All of us need to work together. So an example of an incentive, let's use the medicine take-back event again. Last year, we collaborated with Seaside Pharmacy to get the word out in the community about this event and the importance, and they helped to pass out flyers. So an incentive for them, or anybody, a partner, the fire department, is to make sure that they receive proper recognition. And then finally, is change in policies. And the target audience for these type of strategies is you, councilors, or to change laws or policies within the city. But this also applies to institutions. For example, a few years ago, Mass General Hospital changed their prescription practices in primary care in terms of prescription practices for pain management. So what is being tar, what is being done in our city in terms of prevention? From the city perspective, we have the mayor's office support. Every year, we collaborate, the coalition works with the mayor's office during Revere Shines to do the annual medicine take-back event where residents have an opportunity to properly dispose of medicine so they don't go into the wrong hands. As it was mentioned before, the Healthy Community Initiatives is the recipient and the fiscal agent for the Massachusetts Opiate Addiction Prevention Collaborative Grant. This is the regional grant that the mayor mentioned that includes Chelsea, Winthrop, and Saugus. And the prevention strategies that are currently being funded through this grant is another resource website where folks can access prevention materials, but also, once again, be connected to somebody who can help the loved one who is in trouble. We also have a community leadership strategy. So this is not only for our key leaders in Revere, but in the other cities as well, so that we may identify champions who will help and support implement strategies. The Revere Cares Coalition does a couple of prevention strategies. Again, the medicine take-back event, which would not be possible without the support of the mayor's office, who helps us to advertise and get the word out. We also run the Above the Influence Campaign. This is a national campaign that has been adopted for the city of Revere. It's a campaign to help young people recognize that there are positive and negative influences in their life, and to encourage them to make positive decisions for themselves, especially around now use in substances. Without the support of Revere Public Schools, we could not implement any of these campaign activities. September, you also have seen us come before you in September, which is naturally recognized as Recovery Month. During September, we organized a community walk for recovery. This is an opportunity where we usually gather over 300 Revere youth to come and show that they want to be above the influence, but we also bring folks in recovery to share their story so that a community understands that there is hope, treatment does work, recovery is possible. For many years, our coalition has done an annual pledge drive where we visit all schools from the elementary to high school to ask parents to talk to their kids about now using substances and give them information and tips that they may need. We usually get around 800 parents for the past 10 years, you know, to fill this pledge drive. We also do community education via traditional and social media, and the coalition had Mass Call II grant to address opiates a few years ago, and one of the strategies that we implemented in collaboration with the fire department was the implementation of the permanent drop-off box, which is a resource that community members can use any time of the year to safely dispose of unwanted meds. In terms of providers, MGH Primary Care, North Suffolk Mental Health, and Cambridge Health Alliance also have their own prevention strategies. Now, I wanted to speak briefly to you about what are the intervention strategies? Intervention strategies are aimed at current users and saving lives. They include naloxone, which the fire chief already mentioned, is a medicine that reverses the effects of an overdose. The prescription drug, the prescription monitoring program, is aimed at doctors, pharmacists, and dentists, and this prevents doctor shopping and abuse of overprescription. Substance use disorder screenings at all schools and during, at all points in the medical system. And another important factor in terms of intervention is data transparency. We need to be sharing data among first responders and EMS so that we can identify what are the hotspots in our community, so that we're able to send our community outreach workers there. Our current intervention strategies from the city are, as mentioned before, that the Revere Fire and Police Department have a grant from the Department of Public Health to carry Narcan. The city is the fiscal agent for the drop-in center, which has a community outreach worker. And as the fire chief mentioned, the fire department is doing outreach and education. The Revere Cares Coalition helps to funnel the determination of need funds that come from MGH. And in terms of providers, we have, the MGH Pharmacy has a stand-in order for naloxone for all their patients, Chelsea Drug Court, North Suffolk Mental Health, the Parent Forum, Bay Cove Human Services, Bridge Over Troubled Waters, Roca, and Learn to Cope are also implementing different intervention strategies. So now I would like to pass the presentation on to Julia Newhall, who will be speaking to you about treatment and recovery, best practices, and what's being done. And Sylvia Chang will close off the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you.
Name and address, please.
My name is Julia Newhall, and I am the Massachusetts Opiate Addiction Prevention Collaborative Grant Manager, which many people mentioned is the regional grant that oversees the city of Revere, city of Chelsea, towns of Saugus, and Winthrop.
Thank you very much.
So I just want to start by thanking everybody for attending this event, and that we are in a bit of a crisis when it comes to the opioid epidemic issue. When we think about treatment, it's a very complex disease, and we try to look at it from like a multifaceted approach where there is no right way or wrong way. It's, it really depends upon the individual. And so I'm going to go over some of the basics around what treatment is available, both on a broad level and at the local level. So if you'll look to page five of your presentation, acute treatment services and clinical stabilization services. This includes detoxes, so somebody who is trying to come off of the drug of their choice, based on the physiological effects of that. We have step-down beds and services, so transitional support services, which, when someone is in the interim from getting into long-term residential treatment, they go into a transitional support home. Recovery high schools, treatment and correction facilities, and medication-assisted treatment. That includes things like Suboxone, Vivitrol, and Methadone. Some of the current treatment strategies within the local area include the drop-in center, which was mentioned tonight, every Tuesday evening from 5:00 to 8:00. That's overseen by the Determination of Needs Funds through the city of Revere. Revere Cares Coalition also helps fund the drop-in center. Providers include MGH Revere Mental Health and Social Services, and there's a Suboxone program within the health center. North Suffolk offers an array of services as well. Leahy Health Behavioral Services, Bay Cove Human Services, Community Substance Abuse Center in Chelsea, which is a methadone clinic, Habit Opco, Meridian House in East Boston, which is a therapeutic community, Eastern Middlesex, which is in Malden, is a male, all-male residential halfway house, Casper, Hope House, Project Hope, Cushing House and Gavin House. Those are adolescent programs in South Boston, East Boston Rehab, Ryan House, and Salvation Army and Spectrum in East Boston Neighborhood Health Center. So these are just a few examples of local treatment providers, but, you know, there are others as well, and it really depends upon the individual what type of treatment that they're going to seek out. If you'll go to the next page, like treatment, recovery is, is also a matter of the individual and what they think their journey towards recovery will be and should be, based on their own needs. When we think about recovery, the two terms often get convoluted, treatment and recovery. And so the biggest emphasis on recovery is more about the stigma related to it, and to recognize that the recovery population should have a voice and a face, and does have a voice and a face, and we need to be cautious of that and make sure that they are at the table, and that this is something that we want to make sure their voice is being heard throughout this conversation as they've already experienced it within their own lives. Also, medication-assisted treatment are examples. Support services include reentry programs for people who have been recently released from prison or jail, and things like employment services, removing barriers around the quarry, reducing stigma, expanding peer and support services. And the, on the local level, as far as the recovery services are concerned, like I said, we have the drop-in center every Tuesday evening. Our peer recovery coach in Revere couldn't be here tonight, but through the Mass Call II grant, she was funded and is now actually the lead recovery coach for the four recovery coaches that we've hired through the MOAPC grant in Winthrop and in Saugus. And so we're actually trying to build the infrastructure within these communities to hire these peer recovery coaches, which have become a promising practice. And really, the goal is to peer people up who have been through similar experiences and help them find mentors so that they can, to go through their journey of recovery and become acclimated into the community as well. We have the Revere Cares Coalition, which every September does the Revere Beach Memorial to recognize those who have lost their lives to addiction, but also try to decrease the stigma that is attached to it. And we have MGH Revere Mental Health and Social Services and recovery coaches. MGH has hired, I believe, five recovery coaches throughout their drop, their local health centers, and so that's something that obviously is becoming a trend across the recovery community. And Moore, which is the Massachusetts Addiction Recovery, and as I believe, Dimple- And as I believe Dimple mentioned, there are some booklets over there on the table. It's a very comprehensive guidebook that I recommend people take with them, and I thank Patrick Cronin for coming here tonight and bringing those resources. And also want to just thank the mayor for agreeing to support an opioid task force, and I look forward to collaborating with all of you in the future and really try to focus on this issue, because this is a matter of life and death. So, thank you very much. Sylvia Chang will come up.
For the record, would you state your name and address, please?
Sylvia Chang, the new director of Revere Cares.
Welcome.
I will continue the presentation outlining for you the gaps that we identified at this moment, but we are open to hearing if the other stakeholders have identified even more. Unfortunately, we have gaps in all four areas that we need to address of prevention, intervention, treatment, and recovery. And then I will go through the recommendations that we have for the council. In terms of the gaps for prevention, we definitely need more information. The type of information needed is varied. One is demographic information, mainly of the high-risk population. We also need more information on what the current resident knowledge, perceptions, and norms are in the community, and then the current risk and protective factors that need to be improved in this community. We also want to enhance the education opportunities, a lot of it, well, some of it at the school level, maybe increase the time of education and use a curriculum, implement a full curriculum for education at that level. And we would also like to increase parent education and opportunities for skill-building of parents at the prevention level. Again, in prevention, we want to increase activities for enhancing the community awareness around this problem, and we also need to build capacity at different levels. The capacity needs to be built in terms of adequate staffing and financial resources in all our organizations that are currently working on the problem. We want to increase participation from all sectors. We also need to improve the evaluation processes. Again, we need to fill in data gaps. We need to increase partnership agreements, and within our participating organizations, we need to make a better job of outlining in job descriptions the specific tasks of working around this issue for some positions in partnership organizations. We want to make a better analysis of the stakeholders and make an accountability map, and we also want a stronger collaboration with the justice system. In terms of intervention, the gaps that we identified were to, we need to increase patient education around the risk of prescription drug addiction. We would also like to increase the use of prescription monitoring program and increase the capacity of the drop-in center. The professional development and educational training for those already addressing substance use disorders also needs to increase, and we need to increase efforts to address the stigma at family, community, and institutional levels. We also would like to enhance the ability to share data between all first responders to opioid overdose calls. And in the treatment area, again, is increasing, but we need to increase the knowledge, increase the knowledge and transmit this knowledge of insurance coverage, which is very confusing and families lack. We also need to increase adequate screening, the treatment, and increase support services. That's at the treatment level. In terms of recovery, things, the gaps that we have are that we still have big barriers to social mobility, such as employment for people in recovery. We need to increase these recovery-oriented services. Apply evidence-based approach to sentences, increase support for the families, educational training across institutions, and again, increase trainings and efforts in the recovery area to address stigma. So as you can see, there's still a lot of work to be done, and at this point in time, you probably then have some logical questions in terms of, okay, so which gaps can we address? It is very clear that at the local level, we cannot address all these gaps, and so it will be a matter of understanding these gaps and identifying which ones need to be addressed more at regional or even state or federal level. But of those gaps that we identify that can be addressed at a local level, we now then need to prioritize, prioritize, because there are many, and we need to understand which ones are the critical ones to address. So let's pause at this point, and we will agree to acknowledge that we've at least accomplished the goal of informing you, the community, and the city council on what are the best practices and what are the current things being done locally, and some of the gaps we've identified. But I think we all agree that there is, this is a lot of information in a short time, and it's, and we need to be more comprehensive in addressing it. So we would like to proceed to make a recommendation. We know that in a previous city council meeting, it was proposed the formation of a local opioid task force, and it was sent to Public Safety Committee. So our recommendation is the following. In the public health field, we are going around using the term collective impact, and all it means, and all it is, is a more structured approach to a collaboration effort, in order to make sure that we will achieve significant and lasting social change. This is a complex problem, and as we've said before, not one institution can address it, but the collaboration of many at different levels. So this collective impact framework has calls for a backbone organization, and this is similar to the role Revere Cares has had in the past, but I will explain to you, according to this framework, what the backbone organization needs. It needs to have some funding, and it will need to have staff with the following skills. It is a staff that knows how to lead and convene, direct, facilitate meetings, and in terms of facilitation, among other things, is moving from consensus to action. It needs to be, have the capacity to analyze data, to monitor policy changes and analyze them, to coordinate and administrate meetings and schedules and things like that, and manage communication efforts and maintain relationship with funders. Through those skills and those, and that capacity, the backbone organization is able to guide a vision that these different stakeholders need to agree upon, develop a strategy, and it will be able to support aligned activities, establish shared measurement practices, build public will, advance policy, and mobilize funding. So the next step, we recommend that the Committee of Public Safety move on to identify a backbone organization that can immediately work together with those stakeholders that are ready to come together at a table and pick up from here. Look again the gaps, make sure that they're complete, analyze and understand them, prioritize, and proceed to make a plan to implement new strategies. You also, in your packet, have a third handout that has the list of recommended stakeholders that DPH has identified are important for this table. You also have the list of the current participants for the regional effort. These members vary in the level of engagement currently, but they were called originally to participate at the regional level. And you also have the regional, people at the, the names of the regional effort, of the regional partners for that effort. So we, as Revere Cares, we're here to help, continue meeting, offer any collaboration that's needed, and we truly believe that, as been seen in the past Revere history, together we can make a difference. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now, are there any councils that have any questions? Counselor Zambudo?
No, I just want to thank everybody for the presentation, but what I will say is that the information that was provided tonight will be very helpful for people that are trying to reach out to people that need recovery. The fire department, I want to congratulate the chief and his people for great resources here, and the Revere Cares and everybody involved for all this information. It's a lot of information, but those of us that refer people that are looking for help know how valuable this information is. So I want to thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Zambudo. Counselor Redden?
I just want to say, from my experience in my law practice, that everything the chief said is true, particularly about the fact that this is a problem that overrides virtually every social, economic, and cultural spectrum of our citizenry. It really is astoundingly, astoundingly non-exclusive, this addiction, and we really need to work much harder to not only identify potential, people are potential to succumb to this, but effective treatment programs to deal with it once we identify them. And it's really, you know, from my perspective, unfortunately, the treatment programs seem to be all over the place, and I think most people in public health will agree that, you know, you'll get a better program here or a worse program there, or something like that, but really, we need to do, make a much better job, do a much better job of finding consistently effective programs to deal with people who suffer. So we don't have multiple situations where Narcan is used, and I see this all the time, where I'm seeing more and more people who are not only treated once with Narcan, Narcan, it's, while it's hard to believe, sometimes three and four times. And that tells you an awful lot about how serious this problem really is. And so I congratulate you people for working so hard on that, and I, and I know I speak for my colleagues when I say that we'll do anything and everything we can to join in this effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Redden. Any other counselors? Counselor Morabito?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to praise the efforts of the Health Department, the Fire, the Police Department, all the other volunteer groups and non-volunteer groups who put their all into this to make this a, for keeping this issue in the public eye. And I think it's very important. And I think this is, this event is the launchpad of letting people know that there are resources out there, and they're not alone. And it takes many people and many parts working together to get through this and to create awareness, and I think this is a great positive step. And thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Counselor Morabito. Are there any members of the Police Department that are here that would like to elaborate on this issue?
Lieutenant Goodwin? Just before Lieutenant Goodwin comes up, I just want to follow up on what Chief Doherty said. And this is a problem that crosses all ethnic groups, religious groups, socioeconomic groups. It is a major problem, and I just want to say that all of the speakers that you heard from earlier work every day in addressing this problem. We do have a very, very talented group of people here that are aggressively working to help, I'll say, solve the problem. I don't know right now how I personally feel how solvable it is, but how to mitigate the problem to the extent possible through all these efforts with respect to prevention, education, treatment. These are all very, very important aspects, and we have a terrific team. You know, obviously, you heard those that spoke here tonight, but also our Police and Fire Department, that are leaders really across the country in what they do. So with that, Lieutenant Goodwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lieutenant?
You know, I've been doing this for 22 years, and I just want to say that I support treatment.
Go ahead.
I support the treatment as much as anybody else, and, you know, there isn't a week goes by that we don't call one of our colleagues from the service providers for assistance with someone who has an addiction, whether we're trying to help someone get a bed, get someone detoxed. But I also want to remind the people that what we do is, we put drug dealers in jail. That's what we do. And there's a big argument in the state about minimum mandatory jail sentences for drug traffickers. I'm not talking about people that have addictions. And I just want to remind everybody, because they are making a move to reduce those minimum mandatory sentences, again, for drug traffickers. They've raised the trafficking rates in the last couple of years, which prevents us from charging unless we, you know, arrest someone with a significant amount of drugs. And the minimum is 18 grams, and anybody with 18 grams of heroin doesn't have an addiction, and if they do, they're also trafficking in heroin. And I just want, particularly our elected officials to know, and this has to resonate up to the State House, that if we lose the minimum mandatories, it's really going to make it that much more difficult for us on this, because I believe that that is equally as important as the treatment and the prevention programs, which I support wholeheartedly. But again, for second subsequent offenses, for distribution of narcotics and trafficking, that that's important too. And we need your help, the city council, to let our state delegation know that we need those to protect these communities. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Goodwin. Anyone else?
Hi, good evening. Amy O'Hara, 400 Revere Beach Parkway. I just want to mention that the Revere Police Department recognizes that we can't arrest our way out of this problem. This is something we knew previous to Chief Cafrelli's administration with Chief Redden. He was a chartered member of the ATOD Task Force. He was there when Chief Doherty and Captain Picarello talked about Narcan, became educated about it, and realized a little bit more about addiction than he probably didn't know before. He was also in the forefront by having a drug drop-off box at the Revere Police Station, something that other departments didn't have at the time, but we have it all the time. We just don't have one event. So when Chief Cafrelli took over in office, he wanted to make sure that we continue to be involved in the ATOD Task Force and to continue to be part of a problem-solving approach. The Revere Police Department is also involved with two grants. One is with the Revere Fire Department, which is the first responder grant. As we know, the fire department was one of the first agencies in the country to carry Narcan. The police department, hopefully in the future, will be carrying it as well. We are currently trained in the use of Narcan. We have to overcome a couple of hurdles to be able to carry Narcan. When you have a police department and a fire department and other agencies that we're all collaborating on, we're in the forefront. You don't really see that with other agencies, but we've already been there. We're also involved, again, with the ROC. It's a regional grant that the Revere Police Department sits in on, and we're there when the fire department talks about the toolkit that they use when they have an overdose. We're there, helping them decide different strategies we can use to address this issue. See, the police department, we're with Cataldo and the Revere Fire Department when we respond to medical aid calls and overdoses. And one of the things we've done is we change the way we document these issues, and if there's a fatality, we make sure it's documented in our commuter system, something, in our computer system, something we didn't do before. So the police department, I just want to say, is involved, and we're here collaborating with the other agencies, trying to come up with problem-solving approaches and trying to deal with this other than enforcement, which we know is a piece of the puzzle, but we're also looking at other strategies.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make the people aware that I had a conversation with Chief Cafrelli today, and I want to thank him for, he couldn't make it here tonight. today, and I want to thank him for, he couldn't make it here tonight, but I want to thank him for sending Lieutenant O'Hara and Lieutenant Goodwin. They both are very capable in what they do. And again, I want to thank them, and also along with the chief of the Fire Department, Chief Doherty, who, him and his men, I mean, they're unique. They started the whole thing. And he should be, he should be thanked immensely for it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there anyone else out there that would like to speak on this issue? Hearing none, I just, sir, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Cole, C-O-L-E. I work out of Chelsea Juvenile Court, which is part of Suffolk Juvenile Court probation, probation officer. I cover Winterboro and Revere. I see firsthand a lot of the younger onset issues with the juveniles. And for many people that in this room may know, juveniles now are up to 18, because there was a law change. Grew up in Medford, very familiar with Revere, and the political structure and the infrastructure in different cities. One thing is I've been a member of the Revere Cares Task Force for a number of years also. And I would suggest that this community has a lot of infrastructure, a lot of talented people, a lot of caring people. I come across them in the school departments, out in the streets, on the corners, the police that I know. We work hand in hand. Court system's there for the community, of course. But the court system sometimes is sort of that last resort. Adults is a bit different. What I would want to bring to your attention also about Revere Cares is that they're respected nationally, because I've been involved with five or six other coalitions that were startup coalitions, and they look to Revere Cares for assistance and guidance at the beginning. So, they do fantastic work. What I see lacking in Revere, in some cities too, is I've never seen a youth center. I know there's the youth zone, but I'm talking about a youth center. Silesians, East Boston, the YMCA's, the Boys and Girls Clubs. So, one thing I would suggest is vacant buildings, space, land, business partnerships is something out there. Schools at night, mixed-use communities, a lot of these schools are made in a way where you can actually use the school externally from the street, the gym, the calf, certain areas, and not be in the halls and the classrooms, which everyone's familiar with how the new schools are built. So, I would strongly suggest that that ends up as an agenda item on both ends, City Council and also School Committee. The other thing that I think would be really important, and I see this with the changes in the marijuana law, is that if you have a solid policy internally in the city on how you deal with marijuana issues, and not just the citation part of it, but for instance, every youth caught in school with marijuana, it's not an arrest, it's not a court issue anymore. We don't see them. So, if there's mandatory 12-week program, one-hour class for 12, again, it's within the statute, but there's mandatory and certain things that happen consistently all the time, those are interventions that are very, very important. And if those interventions happen, you deal with these type of issues on the onset end early on in the schools. Make no doubt about it, there are 12, 13-year-old adolescents out there exposed to the opiate issue. They see it in their families, they may have experimented. I tell this story sometimes to people, and I think it's an eye-opening experience. I sat with three or four kids one time in my office, and they were talking, and they were only about 15, 16-years-old. And I was talking about, they talked about a party they went to, and they said they went to a Skittles party. And I said, "Skittles." I go, "You gotta help me out with this one." So, the party was, you get your prescription drugs, you get them out of the house, you get them out of grandmums, get anywhere. You go in, you take a bowl, a fishbowl, you throw them in the fishbowl. People pay, go through the door, you get a scoop, you get a handful, whatever. Were they exaggerating? Possibly. But just, just within that context, if there is that fishbowl, no one really knows what's in that. So, to aggressively look at how the marijuana issue is treated, and I know there's limitations, that goes a long way. The last thing I would suggest to the mayor and his office and others, and it may exist, is a committee, Exploratory Youth Committee. And look at youth center issues, look at youth issues, get a cross-section across the city. I'd be more than willing to be part of that. But these are just some things from my end. We're very concerned on the juvenile court side, because we see a different escalation now, because we're missing the younger kids on the first-time pot possession or the lower-end offenses, and we're seeing them a little bit older along, more hardened, more experimental with the drugs, a lot of prescription meds. So, it's very concerning. So, just those several suggestions are some things that I think would really help in the community. I know it takes time, I know it takes funding, I know there's, it can't happen overnight. But those are just three areas that I think really are important on the adolescent youth side.
Thank you very much, Sheriff, for your input. Councilor Orego, you wanted to speak?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be, I'll be brief. I just want to thank the presenters tonight for their hard work. They really are tackling this issue, and I think we have a lot of confidence in the fact that we have good people helping to tackle this, this issue. And obviously, the comprehensive presentation that was put forth tonight speaks volumes to what the work that's being done every day. To the previous speaker's point, I do, I can't agree more, and I do want to mention that we actually have, Councilor Janino and I have a motion tonight about a group called Revere Youth in Action that has done a lot of work in the buildup to trying to think about and trying to frame the, frame the debate on building a youth center in Revere. It is much needed, and I want to remind people that we do have a high school to build in a couple of years, and a youth center as part of that high school would probably make sense in terms of a package of building construction. But, but again, I want to, I want to say that, you know, Councilor Janino and I put this motion in a couple of months ago to raise awareness and to start the dialogue. I think this is a great beginning to that. I don't want to see it end, and I know we're going to continue to be active partners with, with Revere Cares and with the city to make sure that we, we do address this issue. And again, I can't commend the presenters enough tonight, and I look forward to working with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Orego. Councilor Janino?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll be brief. My colleagues stated most of my points, but the most important one is we put that motion in originally to create a conversation, and I think that's exactly what happened. It started with a very small conversation with Viviana and Kitty and Brian and I, and it's expanded to the entire community. And you have three police lieutenants here, you have the fire chief and members of the Fire Department, you have members from all different areas in our community that are here to help. And it's not, they're not just here for tonight, they are here for the community 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, this isn't just a conversation that we're going to start, we're going to talk about it, it's done, move on. This is something that is present in our community, it's something that's not going away anytime soon, and it's something that we're looking at, and we're going to have a solution to eventually. And I want to thank everybody here. I know Councilor Orego mentioned the students from Revere Youth in Action. That does come up later on the agenda this evening. There was a clerical issue. It was submitted on the 26th, but it's, and it's a late communication. But we do have members of our community that are students that are just as involved as the adults that are in this room, so I'm really happy to see that. And I think that there's going to be a bright future for Revere, that, you know, it's always really bad before it gets really good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Janino. I want to thank, first of all, Revere Cares for the presentation being made here this evening, taking your time to come up here and express your concerns for the youth of this city. I also want to thank the chief of police for sending his officers up here this evening. And I know how hard they work, I've seen them in action out there, and it's a very, very large problem. And it's a problem that I think has to be addressed more nationally than, as well as locally. There are too many individuals in this city and around the country, I would imagine, that would go to a doctor and say, "I have a sore back," or "I have a sore arm," and the doctor writes a script for them. And then an hour later, they go to another doctor, and same presentation, and the doctor writes a script for, again. And before you know it, they have two or three scripts, they're selling them on the streets, they're getting into more aggressive drugs. I think that there needs to be a system in this state and in this country that's computerized, where you go for a prescription, I don't care who you are, you have to have some type of an ID with your picture, your date of birth, your social security number, it's put into a database, where that doctor can turn around and say, "Hey, you are, you're in Everett now, but you were in Revere yesterday, and you got a prescription from Dr. X," or whoever it might be. And this is, I think, one of the ways to solve the problem in this country, to make sure that these prescriptions are not as available to people that use drugs. I think another thing is that in your home, if you see your son walking around or your daughter with a, with a bottle of prescription drugs, question them, find out where it came from, find out why they have it. If they said they got it from a doctor, call the doctor if they're underage, and find out why that doctor issued that prescription. These are all things. In addition to what you people do here, you do a great job. I've watched you over the past 15 years, Kitty. I've seen how your organization down there operates, and you've done so much, so much to stop and prevent addiction in this city. And I want to thank you on behalf of the City Council and the City of Revere this evening, and I want to thank the mayor for your input, and also Chief Doherty. His firefighters are out there constantly answering medical calls for addiction overdoses, and they do a tremendous job, and thank God we have them. Thank you. Call the next item, please.
This is calendar item number three, Council Auto 15149, motion of reconsideration filed by Councilor Zambudo relative to the Verizon petition for a joint pole location on Ward Street. Motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider. Call the roll, please.
Councilor Orego?
All right, we'll recess for five minutes.
Calendar item number three.
Councilor Zambudo, would you close the door, please? Tony? Thank, thank you. Call the next item on the agenda.
Okay, motion to reconsider, Councilor Zambudo, relative to Verizon petition for joint pole location on Ward Street.
Reconsideration would be to allow the joint pole location on Ward Street?
Point of information, it's to allow, to reconsider, to discuss it again, not, not to allow it.
Okay, motion to reconsider. Councilor Orego?
Yes.
Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Councilor Guanasso is absent, Councilor Haas is absent, Councilor McKenna is absent, Councilor Morabito is absent, Councilor Novoseltsky?
Yes.
Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Councilor Redden?
No.
Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
And the president?
No.
Motion to reconsider is lost.
Call the next item, please.
Committee reports?
Councilor Redden?
Councilor Redden?
Thank you, Mr. President. The zoning subcommittee met this afternoon to discuss four different matters. Inasmuch as they are all being held in committee pending the next subcommittee meeting on the 27th, I'll just very briefly cite them. C-15-02 is a petition from Oxford Airport Technical Services to change a non-conforming use at 85 North Shore Road. C-15-03 is a petition from Angela Cadonia Ramirez of Harrington Street to change a non-conforming use at 124 O Square. C-14-04 is a petition from LLC Revere Beach Parkway Realty LLC La Hermitage of Fort Lauderdale to change a non-conforming use as well at 1141 Revere Beach Parkway. And C-15-05 is a petition by Peta Latanzi, trustee of L&amp;L Realty Trust, to change pre-existing non-conforming use within the RB District at 166 Winterbavenue. Inasmuch as we had a, at least one member missing, two members actually, the subcommittee not in attendance, as everybody knows, Council Guanasso is having some issues, which I won't go into any more, any further than has already been elucidated at this point. The, in that there are three members missing this evening, Mr. President, I think we're going to keep these in subcommittee until we have a full, as is, I think, the best policy.
That's fine.
For, for the 27th.
That's the way it should be, really.
Absolutely. And we actually have some more information coming in on three of those petitions as well, so.
Thank you. Councilor Novoseltsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. On the DPW Subcommittee, we, we had a meeting earlier today, and we talked about two items. One was, believe it or not, about snow removal and a, a plan for this coming winter. And what's happening now is we're working on a, a plan to propose a something, things that we're going to do for this winter in August. That will go in front of the Traffic Commission come September, where we will have to change some ordinances to allow the police and fire and to, and Public Works to do their job for snow removal. And then hopefully in October, we'll be passing some, we won't be, but the Traffic Commission will be passing some ordinance, ordinances to be implemented during this coming winter. I know we did have a bad winter last year, as everybody knows, and we want to try and make things better, and we won't have to go through what we went through last year with some of the small streets. The second item we talked about was the current issue with potholes and DPW requests, see, click, fix, the Facility Dude program that we're, the City Council's involved in. And Superintendent of Public Works was here explaining that we have a private contractor coming in, hopefully within a month, to implement trench repairs, pothole repairs, and then give some extra effort on some signs that many of us have requested be installed around the city. So, with that, you know, everything is progress, and we have nothing to report as far as coming out with any recommendations or motions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Novoseltsky. Councilor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Are we still under suspension?
We are.
Okay, so at this time, I will ask for reconsideration on the budget transfers in the hopes that it will not prevail.
Go ahead. Call the roll.
It's not a roll call, is it? Oh, okay.
You don't want to do a roll call?
No, it's fine. I didn't, I didn't know you wanted the roll.
Yeah.
That's fine.
All right. So ordered. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is a communication from the mayor relative to capital improvement plan.
Place it on file.
This is a communication from the mayor requesting a revolving account for the dog park.
Do a roll call on this, please. Councilor Zambudo?
Councilor Re, oh, is this for this one?
This is for the dog park.
We have a communication from Councilor McKenna. I apologize for my absence for tonight's meeting. In regards to two motions that will be presented at this council meeting, I would like the public to know that I support the dog park ordinance, and I support calendar item number 15-155, a motion presented by Councilor Powers, that the City Council go on record as supporting House Bill 770 and 771, as submitted by Representative Rosely Vincent.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want the people to know that this, Ellie Baker, Ellie Baker called me. She wouldn't be here, she would be here tonight to support this. Ellie Baker would call me. She told me.
Yeah, she was very instrumental in this.
Very instrumental in doing, putting this dog park together. And the people out there know, this is, all this is, is an account that's going to be for money that they raised privately to put into the account.
That's correct. There'll be no taxpayer expenditures on this whatsoever.
Thank you.
Councilor Zambudo, and then Councilor Janino.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm certainly in favor of the revolving account. I thought that you were going to take up the ordinance. It's not quite ready yet. So I'm certainly in favor of the revolving account for the privately raised funds.
Thank you, Councilor Zambudo. Councilor Janino.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak in favor of this. I spoke with Elle as well. I went to their dog parade, which was a really fun event that they put on to get funds for this rolling. And basically, what this account would do is pay, they'd raise the money themselves, and it would just fund any repairs or if they got doggy bags and stuff like that to keep at the park, so the park can maintain itself, which is what we want it to do and what we need it to do. And Elle's really been phenomenal at getting this going and having this in Revere, and it really cleans up a big piece of property that was just overgrown grass. So I'm glad to see this go in, and I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Janino. Councilor Novosolsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I too spoke to Elle, actually yesterday, I believe, and she explained to me what was going on. I have no problem with it. The only issue I had is, I thought in the past, in some of the other accounts that we set up, there was a maximum amount of money that could be in it. So, you know, I want that to be checked out.
I agree with you 100%.
Yeah. So I'm not sure what that number was in those other accounts.
I'm not sure either. I know we had them down at the Recreation Department years ago.
And also Inspection Services.
Inspection Services also.
So I don't know what that number is, so I don't know where we want to go with this now.
Well, let's leave it on the table until we get.
Okay, yeah, I don't want to kill it.
No, I don't want to kill it either.
Make sure it's right.
It's a very worthy thing, but I think there's got to be a dollar amount attached to it to set up a revolving account, not to exceed X amount of dollars.
And I did mention this to Elle, so.
Okay. Did she give you any inclination of what the amount was?
No, she had no clue. Nope.
All right. We'll leave it here till the 27th. That's fine. Just remain on the table.
Okay, so table?
Point of information. Mr. President?
State your point.
We're setting up a revolving account. Why does it have to have a number attached to it? This is privately raised funds. They want to have a revolving account.
It always has in the past, Counselor.
But there's no, there's no need of a cap on a revolving account.
There's no need to rush this tonight. This can wait until.
That's your prerogative, but it's.
It is, thank you.
I would like it to make sense when you do stuff like this.
And, Mr. President?
Well, I think it does make sense. I always try to make sense.
To try and clarify, if I may, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Counselor Novosolsky.
Councilor Zambudo. If it goes into a city account, it, all rules and regulations for spending it have to be abided by through the city funding. Even though the city's not funding, it could be, just like the scholarship account.
Just like a grant, Counselor.
But it's coming, it's coming out of.
Just like a grant. We get $100,000, it goes in one account, we have to.
So it still has to be addressed.
That's fine. That's fine.
Thank you.
Table.
That's clarification, that's fine. But I don't, I don't see why it has to be a city account.
Okay. Items number eight through 11 are communications from the Site Plan Review Committee on the finding conditions and recommendations.
Mr. President, I move that we place those on file with the petitions.
Yeah, those will be placed on file. And this, yeah.
Made part of the, made part of the documents.
Do you want them?
Made part of each.
And there's another one that's going to be coming from Frank Stringi regarding that situation on North Shore Road. Okay, fine.
Okay, this is a communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of a licensed drainlayer, PG Constructioning.
Appointment to Subcommittee.
I ought to refer it. This is a communication from the mayor relative to reappointments, appointment to Library Board of Trustees, and various appointments to the Historical Commission.
Appointment to Subcommittee.
This is a communication from the Director of the Veterans Service. I am requesting, on behalf of the family of Dominic Russo, a memorial square sign to be installed at the area of Stowers and Revere Street.
Mr. President?
State your points, sir.
It's not a point, it's just a comment. As the chairman of the Veterans Committee, I would hope that this not be put into my committee and that we vote on this tonight and request that the DPW install it as soon as possible.
No problem. Call the roll, please.
Councilor Rego?
Yes.
Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Councilor Guanasso is absent. Councilor Haas is absent. Councilor McKenna is absent. Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Councilor Novosolsky?
Yes.
Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Councilor Redden?
Yes.
Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
And the president.
Yes, motion is approved.
Ordered. Okay, now we're on motions.
Number 15.
Motions. Motion presented by Councilor Powers that the City Council go on record as supporting House Bills 770 and 771 as submitted by Representative Rosalie Vincent.
This is a motion in support of Rosalie Vincent's House bill. And with the House bill, if passed, would disallow the issuance of a license for a third burner at the Resco Facility and also to increase the landfill by 25 feet, I believe. And I had occasion to go over to a meeting of the Sogus Board of Selectmen two weeks ago, and they were opposed to this. I think it's a, it creates a health problem for the residents of Riverside, Pointer Pines, Oak Island, and Lower Revere Street to allow that third burner or the increase to exist. In fact, I have coming up here, two members of the Board of Selectmen on the 27th to discuss this further, to enlighten the voters of this city. So perhaps we, if you want to lay, we can lay this on the table until the 27th.
Okay, that's fine. And I also have a communication from Rosalie Vincent. I'll make part of that motion.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
27, yeah.
Well, we're going to table the whole thing, right? Do you want Rosalie's, Vincent's communication?
Make it part of that, but, yeah. Make it part of that, and we'll have it read that evening.
This is a motion presented by Councilor Rego that the City Council present certificates of commendation to the Revere Youth Baseball and Softball Championship teams.
Councilor Rego?
Speaks for itself.
Thank you. On the motion, all in favor? So ordered.
This is a motion presented by Councilor Powers that the City Council present a certificate of commendation to Jim Cunningham upon his retirement from the Chelsea Revere Winter Belder Services. For 39 years, Jim has provided elderly services to countless senior citizens in the area.
That motion also speaks for itself.
This is a motion presented by Councilor Redden that the Director of Inspection Services be requested to appear before the next City Council meeting to discuss the severe rodent situation infesting the city and what can be done about the problem.
Councilor Redden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. I never realized that this problem was as great as it has become until I saw the little fellows scurrying across my backyard. Come to find out, my neighbors up the street are having the same problem, neighbors across the street are having the same problem, and very many neighbors down on Oakwood Avenue are having the same problem. I talked to Nick Catonazzo, and he tells me that this is a problem metropolitan-wide. And while the sight of them really doesn't bother me that much, my wife was apoplectic. Mrs. Pesci next door was apoplectic. And I understand why they're apoplectic. To say that there are rats all over the metropolitan area unfortunately does not solve the problem. We do have a process, and I credit the Inspection Services. If you go down there and sign a waiver, they'll give you an exterminator who will bait your property once. Whether once is enough is a question, but more significantly, if your property gets baited and your neighbor's property doesn't get baited, I would suggest that the rodents are probably only going to go a few feet away from where you are, and they're going to have a problem. All you're pushing the problem up the street. So I'd like to talk to Nick and get some ideas about what we can do about this, because as everybody knows, if you've seen one, you've seen 50 or 60, 600, 6,000, 7 million, whatever. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Novosolsky.
Thank you, Ms. President. I want to thank Council Redden for putting this in, because over the last two weeks, I've had numerous calls down in my neighborhood, just around my house, and down on Kimball Avenue, and behind Wonderland Plaza. It's terrible. The ladies are calling me, literally screaming on the phone while they're looking at it. And I've actually seen them down at Costa Park, around the lower end, middle part of Walnut Ave. And I want to thank Nick Catonazzo for taking care of that, because it is city property, so that is something that we eke and bait for us. So, and I know we have a problem over at the public stairs on North Shore Road at Campbell and Campbell Ave. So, and thank him again for that. But the people have to be very diligent and get together. This is not a fight they can do on their own. So I look forward to that, the hearing from Nick. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Novosolsky. Counselor? All right, next motion.
Okay, this is a motion presented by Councilor Redden that the mayor requests the Traffic Commission to hold a public hearing on the implementation of residential parking on Prospect Ridge and Suffolk Avenues.
Mr. President?
Counselor Redden.
This issue has been lingering for some time. I'm not, as many people know, I'm not really a big fan of residential parking. I hate to see people not have guests come to their house or have a party where there's not enough parking spaces. But at the same time, it's getting to the point, and I've heard many complaints about people, not only who are not in the neighborhoods parking there, but people who actually come and leave their cars, get picked up by a van or something like that to go doing, do painting or delivering or something like that. And the cars linger in the neighborhood the whole day while they, they're essentially using our streets as a parking lot. So I'm reluctantly going to request that this be put before the Traffic Commission with the hope that the neighbors will come forward so we can deal with the specifics. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Redden. Counselor Janino.
Thank you. I think this is a great motion, and I think it's something you might want to talk with some of the other ward counselors about too, because I know that when Counselor Pentis served with us, there was a lot of issues with that in Beaumont, so maybe Counselor McKenna might want to take over and look into some of those streets that he had brought up previously, because they're having a very similar issue up there, especially with taxicabs and livery services. So I think it's something that, it opens a conversation for a lot of places in Revere that we really need to start looking a little bit more comprehensively about and see where these issues are. But it's a good motion.
Thank you, Counselor Redden. This will be referred to the Traffic Commission.
Okay. This is a motion presented by Councilor Redden that the mayor consider the hiring of an independent hydrologist to investigate the source of, hydrologist, to investigate the source of water that wells up from below the surfaces on the Reservoir Hill area bounded by Park Avenue and Fennel Street. One example of this problem being the constant flow of water onto Fennel Street near the Borden Street intersection.
Counselor Redden.
Again, very briefly, Mr. President, I alluded to this at the Public Works Subcommittee meeting. You know, I'd like to believe that this is all from the springs and from the overflow and things like that, but I'm not convinced. I, just this particular, and Counselor Janino will back me up on this one. This particular area on Borden Street, at the intersection of Borden and Fennel, is getting to be just a constant rain of water in that area. It's constantly wet. Weeks after, 10 days after it stops raining, it's still water coming down there, and it's got to be coming from someplace. First and foremost, well, if it is, how do we corral it and make it go out our storm drain system? And if not, is it coming from our water delivery system? Is it coming out of our storm drain system? Is it, is it coming, word's god forbid, out of our sanitation system? So I think it's time that the city gets someone independent, and I'm not disparaging our present contractor, but I think we need an independent voice on this thing to figure out exactly what's going on up in that hill. Because I frankly, while Donnie did mention that there were other issues in other parts of the city, I've not seen them. There are two hills that essentially straddle Park Avenue and Ward 4, and I don't see that in the other side of the hill. And it's just as high a hill as the Reservoir Avenue hill. So I just ask that the city take a look at it. I think it's necessary at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Redden. Now, Counselor Redden, it's motion in favor? So ordered.
This is a motion presented by Councilor Powers, Rego, and Haas that the mayor arrange for a meeting between the Revere Police and Fire Departments, State Police, and the City Council to discuss ways to minimize traffic backups during the sandcastle events.
Counselor Rego?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'll defer most of my comments and allow you to expound on this issue, but this is, or has been, a recurring issue and problem in terms of the sand sculpture event and the traffic that we all go through and that the residents go through, to the point where a lot of people from Revere don't end up wanting to go to the sand sculpting event because they can't get down there. So if we can get people in the room to start talking about what our plans are and what ways we're going to minimize traffic backups, from my understanding, there hasn't been that conversation yet, and maybe we can start to make that a more regular conversation and a more, be a little bit more proactive to make sure that we're addressing these issues going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rego. Counselor Novosolsky?
Thank you, Ms. President. President, great timing. Unfortunately, we have to do it sooner than later. It's next Friday, the sand starts coming into the, onto the beach. And in another 10 days, the whole program is underway. So we have to do this immediately to get the State Police and the partnership at DCR together.
You just remind them, I have to give you a check tonight, too.
Yes, you do. And I think it's great timing, and it has to be addressed. You know, they may be talking about it in the background, but we don't know what's going on, and we're the ones that are in the middle of it. My ward, they come into my ward like you wouldn't believe. They're like, like our rodents, believe it or not. They drive in there, and they're in all over the place. They go any, up one-way streets. They park in front of your driveways. It's horrible. You know, it's a great program, but, you know, the people don't respect the people that live around the area that it's happening. So I think it's great timing, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Novosolsky. Just for everyone's edification, I had a conversation with the Chief of Police less than a half an hour ago, and he told me that they are working on a plan. I told him that I would like to have the City Council, Chief of the Fire Department, which is very important, making sure we can get emergency vehicles to where they're needed, and also the Police Revere and State Police also. I guess we have a new lieutenant down at the State Police barracks. And I think part of the, part of the problem is that there's, I grew up at the corner of Revere Street and North Shore Road, and I knew when the dog track was breaking and the beach was breaking at 11 o'clock at night, they had a police officer out there moving traffic along. And when you have traffic signals doing that, when you have a crowd this large, I don't think it works. I think you need someone out there pushing, blowing their whistle, and moving that traffic. And one of the suggestions I would make, and I'm going to make, would be at the top of Revere Street and Ocean Avenue, because as we all know now, there's construction going on down there, and part of that one lane is blocked off on Ocean Avenue, so that's going to make it even more difficult this time than it did before. So that meeting will be set up. I've asked the mayor to set the meeting up through the motion, and all of the council that would like to attend should be there, along with the representatives from the various departments. departments. And hopefully, it won't take an hour, as it did for myself a year ago, to get from Carey Circle to the Revere Street and Ocean Avenue intersection. So that's unacceptable. You can have all the whistles and bells on fire apparatus, but they're not going to move if there's five or six cars in front of them. They can't move. On the motion, all in favor? So ordered.
This is a motion presented by Councilor Rego, Powers, Haas, and Councilor Janino, that a certificate of commendation be presented to the Revere Beautification Committee and Jeffrey Saunders of Comfort Inn and Suites for the renovation and beautification of Bell Circle.
Councilor Rego.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anyone who has traversed Bell Circle recently has no doubt seen the vast improvements that have been made by both the Revere Beautification Committee and Comfort Inn, and I think we ought to take the time out to thank them for their good work. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Rego. Councilor Janino.
Speaks for itself, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Councilor Nowosowski, I know you were part of that, as I was, and I want to publicly thank you for your input into that, as well as what I hope will be your input into the beautification of Butler Circle. All right? With that said, so ordered.
This is a motion presented by Councilors Janino and Rego, that the city council invite Revere Youth in Action to conduct presentation on their work with the youth in the city, and an update on the work that they are currently doing.
Councilor Rego.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Revere Youth in Action has been working diligently to put a plan together to start the conversation about building a rec center, and we look forward to hearing from them. I believe this will go to Councilor Janino's committee for further discussion, but there is a lot of work being done by our young leaders, and look forward to hearing from them about an update. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rego. Councilor Janino.
Thank you. I look forward to this going to my committee, but I also wanted to mention that Dimple was here. I told her that she didn't have to stay for this, because it was going to be later in the evening, but her and Juan Jamilio have a group of students that are excited, that want to tell us what they're working on, that want to get involved in local government, and that are really excited to come before us. So it's my hope that perhaps Councilor Patch and I can hold the public safety meeting and my committee meeting in September, so the kids will be back in school. It's during the addiction prevention month, Awareness Month, so we can tackle that in September, when it's a little bit more appropriate and timely. But the kids were excited, and they wanted to see this on the agenda, and it was a clerical issue, it was a regular motion, it just missed the printer, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Janino. On the motion, all in favor? So ordered. This council will stand adjourned until July 27th at 6:00 PM. Thank you for attending.